25 York City Council meeting. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment on non-agenda items only.
All right.
Yes, sir. And ma'am.
Good morning, good evening.
Good evening.
Whoa, it's been a long day, sorry about that. So, good evening, everyone. So, I just wanted to say.
Just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lester Abbott, resident East Side, Market Street. So, just wanted to say, over the weekend, I had the pleasure of going downtown to the Arts Fest. I spent about an hour or some period of time down there. So, I just wanted to thank the vendors that came out. And I wanted to really thank them for coming out and putting their wares out there and all that. And I'd like to thank all the spectators and buyers who came out there, too. So, I think it was good. You know, it's one of those things that we need to start building up here in the city. So, thank you. Just want to say thank you to everyone for that.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Yes, ma'am.
Marie Rolada, I want to talk about York Fest also. What there was, was really good, but why it was put on that weekend? It had always been the weekend before. But it was competing with Harrisburg and Lancaster. And most of my friends went to Harrisburg. So, I, I think that, that needs to be looked at again. There would have been a lot more participation, a lot more spectators if it had not been that day.
Thank you.
But what was, what was there, I really enjoyed.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening regarding non-agenda items? At this time, I would like to recognize former Mayor Seakin Racy with us this evening. Thank you for joining us. Okay, we will move along to our legislative meeting. Madam Clerk King, please call the roll.
Buck?
Here.
Johniskew?
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
Buckingham?
Here.
Washington?
Here. Now, may we stand all in Stanford Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, we will take action on previous meeting minutes. I make a motion to approve our August 19th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining, that moves forward. At this time, presentations, awards, and announcements. I believe we have Leanna Walter, Outreach and Admissions Counselor from York Adams County's Job Corps, to give a brief presentation on the mission, goals, and services of Job Corps. Hello.
I have slightly new platform for me, so it's like.
You have to go to the microphone to speak.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
I am Leanna Walter. In the professional community, I go by Ms. Walter. It's easier than tripping over my first name. I am Outreach and Admissions for York and Adams County for Job Corps, which means that I work with all of the high schools and anyone 16 to 24 years old that is looking for more information. Okay? We are nationwide, under the Department of Labor, federal government rather than state government.
Can you move the microphone a little closer to your mouth?
Sure. Okay. We are under the federal government rather than the state government with at least two cases in every single state. Okay? When students inquire, the first biggest question is this. If food, clothing, housing, all the normal, basic, daily needs were completely provided and taken care of, you were solid, would the student be in a position to move away from this area for their education? The reason that's an important question is because to participate in Job Corps, you actually need to be able to move to and reside on campus. So, the easiest comparison would be York Tech, Adams County Tech, that except residential and more options to choose from. Okay? The closest campus to here that we use is about two to two and a half hours north in Hazelton as well as Wilkes-Barre. And for the situation of time, I have some materials just to share with you. English and Spanish, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry about that. And going down the line. If you are able and willing to, according to your parameters are.
They're not going to be able to help you. Right here, you see where you need to move back to the.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You're attending pretty well.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And you're available to come to Resource Affairs.
Everything.
At any.
Everything.
If anybody requests it.
Yes. So, the primary purpose of saying hello to everyone this evening is to let you know that we're here, we're available. And I am, I would love to have a conversation with anyone, anywhere of that with either professional presentations, someone who knows someone who knows someone. We all know someone who either wasn't cut out for mainstream education, not cut out for college, but they still need something. You go to college if you want education, psychology, sociology, civil engineering, everything like that. You go to trade school if you want trades. This is about. Okay? I'm always available for questions, comments, concerns. What about this? What about that? This morning, I started my day at Dallas Town High School, stopped by Fern Place over off of Carlisle to pick up a document from a student, went out to Dover to help a student with an application, came home, took care of mommy duty, and then came here this evening. So, just so you realize that I'm not somebody from like Timbuktu or something. I actually live in Central York School District. It's about 15 minutes away. And I've lived in this area for almost 20 years now. So, I'm pretty familiar with the area. Always open to conversations, anything like that. You have my card, you have the information. And I'm excited to be here tonight.
Thank you. Can you repeat your name, your phone number, your email address, or whatever's the best way for people who are watching to contact you?
Sure. Leanna Walter. My work phone number is 570-228-0267. I'm local here in York. And I'd love to hear from anyone who might be interested.
Thank you.
If it's possible, I'd like to be able to collect your contact information on here. Bring it up, first and last name, email address, address, and title, affiliation, whatever the case might be.
All of our contact information is at yorkcity.org, under York City Council.
Good to know.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next legislative meeting will be held here in council chambers on Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, at 6 o'clock PM. All agenda items are due by 12 noon on September 10. Our next council committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 24th, 2025, at 6 o'clock PM here in council chambers. And all agenda items for that is due by 12 noon on September 17. At this time, we'll go into our subdivision, land, development, and harbor. Up next, we have Resolution Number 57.
So, any news? Resolution Number 57, introduced by Elizabeth Buck, being resolved at consult hereby approved certificates of appropriateness for the work to be covered in the applications filed for work at 113 South Pine Street, 272 West Market Street, and 38 North Broad Street.
Move for a vote?
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter?
None.
Is there any public comment regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Buck?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next in our final passage of bills and resolutions, we have final passage of Bill Number 20. Move to approve.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this?
Yes. I'd like to, normally, people watch us process these. They're, they're very routine, nobody gives them much thought. But I want to draw attention to Section 3, and maybe Director Kruger can help me give, I think, a message the community needs to know. Under Section 3, the CDC has cut an immunizations program grant from $115,786 down to $36,208.16. That's about, almost a 70% cut in an important program. And I know the headlines are full of, you know, the cuts that administration is handing down and through its budget process. But I don't think we really understand that this affecting this community as well. And it will impact, and, you know, if Director Kruger, who really does a great job, you know, managing the Bureau of Health directing it, could speak to, what impact will this cut have on the delivery of this service?
Thank you. At this point, at this moment in time, we are able to continue our services as we have. Moving forward, June next year could be a whole totally different story. We've been able to manage to, part of all of these amendments and everything that you see here, budget revisions are so that we can keep doing what we're doing. I can tell you, we are in uncharted territory. That was, I won't say it was totally unexpected, but that is a huge cut, as you've already mentioned. So, at this moment in time, and until June next year, we are able to continue doing what we're doing. We can't guess, anyone can guess what will happen at the federal level. Of course, I say that now, and tomorrow could be a whole nother story. So, we will continue to do that. And specifically in respect to the immunization program, I'm sure some of you have been following the news, there's a lot of unknowns. So, as long as we have supply, we will deliver. I will tell you, last week was a record high of administering over 400 vaccines. That was going into the schools deliberately, in all the schools in the city. And that one-on-one contact, that is more than what we've done in some years in the whole year. So, we are working very closely with our partners. So, appreciate the question. Again, there's many unknowns. We really don't know. We're just trying to keep doing what we're doing and serving our community the best way we can.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Kruger, and thank you, Councilwoman Janescu. Is there any other council comment regarding this?
Just briefly, and I concur with Terry, I did note that 75% significant cut. Section 4 talks about amending the budget for the epidemiology and laboratory capacity for infectious diseases grant, which I believe is a state grant. And it looks like, did we get a little bit more there, which helps offset?
So, what happens is, a lot of these grants are multi-year grants, but they're annually renewable. Our grants in the health bear are primarily fiscal year versus our city calendar year budget. So, when we make our budgets up, we know what we have for the first six months, but we're anticipating what we're going to receive in the next six months. So, for that, that really is a lot of language for, we receive that funding through our emergency preparedness grant. And that was specifically, part of that money was COVID-related money. And it was allocated for us to upgrade technology, to make sure that we have the infrastructure, not only equipment-wise, but people-wise, to respond to not just COVID, but future potential pandemics that may, or any outbreak that may happen. So, so, yes, again, we're able to, to do what we have. We're able to do what we do with what we have by shifting, reallocating where allowable, people and resources. So, that funding stayed flat. So, what was promised to us, the biggest challenge was, we didn't know, even after our grants had been approved for calendar year 25, we didn't know until, you know, just recently, that, yes, some of that funding is still intact. So, that one in particular stayed intact. We have base funding, it's really complicated. But the bottom line is, because of that funding, and because, I will shout out to our governor, because if our governor had not filed on with 21 other states to petition that our funding be kept, we would not have this funding. So, it has taken a whole team and a whole effort and somebody to step up and say, hey, something's not right here. So, I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. Yes. I just want to, you know, congra, say thank you. I think the Bureau of Health is the unsung hero as far as, you know, public health in this city. I real, I appreciate everything you do.
Well, it's the team. That's why I'm here, because people are doing hard work.
Thank you. Any other council comment? No. Any public comment? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Buck?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have final passage of Bill Number 21. Move to approve.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this? I see we have Commissioner Muldro with us this evening. Do you have any comment regarding this? Is there any public comment regarding this? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Buck?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have final passage of Bill Number 22. Move to approve.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. As far as council comment, I do have a comment, and then I'll see if my colleagues have any comments this evening. In regards to our youth council, empowering the youth in the city of York to shape the future of our city is not just important, it's essential. By creating spaces for their voices, ideals, and creativity, we foster civic engagement, leadership development, and a deeper understanding of local government. Just as importantly, we open up ourselves to being educated by them on their needs, their perspectives, and their vision for a stronger and more inclusive community. Too often, decisions that directly impact our youth are made without their input. That must change. Their voices are not only valuable, they belong at the table. In fact, I believe they belong at every table where decisions are made in our city. To that end, I've already begun meeting with representatives from the school district of the city of York, Logos Academy, and Crispus Attics Youth Field Charter School. In the coming weeks, I look forward to meeting with York Academy Regional Charter School, Tidings of Peace, York Catholic, York County School of Technology, and the York County Homeschool Association, along with my colleagues, to ensure broad participation across our student communities. As a part of this initiative, I also plan to visit other cities and states with established youth councils to engage in experiential learning, meeting with their council members and youth leaders to gather insight and best practices. If approved, we anticipate opening the application period in October 2025, with the inaugural Youth Council Committee launching in September 2026. This committee will serve as a platform for youth residents to contribute meaningfully to city governance and community development. We are hopeful that this will be a transformative experience, not only for our youth, but for our entire city of York. Thank you. And I'll open it up for a comment from council as well.
I have a, I have a comment. I belong to, I belong to a civic organization where we had Students of the Month from a couple of area high schools. It was humbling to see what these students in high school brought to the table, how sophisticated they were, how aware they were. And I think our community can only benefit from bringing them to this table. Thank you for leading this up.
Thank you, Vice President. Any other council comment?
Just thank you for bringing this forward. I was a teacher for 20-some years, and I know this is going to be of tremendous value, you know, to the community, to the youth that take part in it. It will, you know, really be transformational.
Thank you, Councilwoman Janescu. Any other further council comment?
I agree with all of you that it's going to be an excellent thing for our youth to be able to, you know, focus on our future leaders. And it kind of reminds me of AmeriCorps years ago, when I had the opportunity to lead a lot of the young people, or young adults now, or adults that are doing some excellent things in the community now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dennis. Any other further council comment?
I also believe the kids are the future. And this is a nice addition for kids who are already in student government at their high schools, or those who are not and want to be involved. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Buck. Is there any comment from the public this evening regarding this matter? Yes, ma'am.
Marie Rolada was a Girl Scout leader of older girls for 38 years. So, I know how great kids can be, and I know how bad kids could be. But when I lived on Long Island, there were two, I think it was 40 years ago. So, I think there were two high school students on city council. I'm not sure whether they were voting members, but I do know of one instance where there was, something was going to be passed about housing. And both students knew that how that was written was wrong. And so, it was rewritten, and it worked out really well. But what I have learned about young people is most of them are not set in their ways yet. And so, when something new is presented to them, they often think out of the box, which I'm sorry, most adults only do that once in a while. It's just, just the way we learned to be. So, I think that anything that you can do to get the opinions of high school students in particular will benefit York City tremendously, because they are out there on the street. They are not in their car bubbles that keep them insulated from what's going on. They are there. They know what's going on.
Thank you. Is there any public comment, further public comment regarding this matter? Yes, sir.
Manuel Gomez, city resident, of course. I think what would really make this special is you, you can really accomplish that cross-section of different communities coming together.
Can you just pick up a little bit for me, please?
It would be more special, and it would really be special if you can accomplish that cross-section of these different communities being represented. Because if it's one or two, that's wonderful. We might see impacts here, you might see some very localized impacts. But think about the youth having to find their own mutual interests as they discover how the local government works, what it really means, and having to find those mutually beneficial solutions. They'll probably do a better job than sometimes we do. But to set them up in that way so early, we'll probably learn a lot from them. But of course, they'll learn a lot from us if we do things appropriately. But that's what is most impressive to me. I like that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Aaron Anderson, CEO at Logos Academy. This, this particular idea about bringing young people into city council, setting up a youth council, I would say just 100%, 100% support this. I think nothing could be more important, not only for our students, but, you know, as a resident here in the city, seeing our young people engaged and learning our civic processes, I think is so, so important today. I, I just wanted to come and stop in and publicly, when, like, kind of lend my support and say 100% behind this, and glad to help however we can, galvanize people however we can. But I, I think it's just a marvelous idea, 100% behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Buck?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have final passage of Bill Number 23. Move to approve.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this? I believe we.
This is, yeah, this is where we, yeah, this is the one about the unlawful manufacturer of guns. So, I think most of you are here to speak on that.
I believe we first have Adam Garber here from Ceasefire Pennsylvania here to speak.
Thank you, Council President Washington, and thank you all for hearing tonight's important matter. Ceasefire PA is Pennsylvania's gun violence prevention organization. We work to ensure everyone can live free from gun violence and have over 50,000 supporters across the state, including here, many here in the city of York. I want to first start by telling you what this ordinance is and what it is not. So, what this ordinance is, is to address a particular problem here in York and well beyond, which is small devices, mostly Glock switches, that, but others as well, that convert a handgun or other firearms into automatic fire weapons functionally. That allows them to fire hundreds of bullets in seconds and minutes, functionally multiplying the carnage of a firearm. It doesn't serve a purpose from a public safety or self-defense purpose, or a hunting purpose. What it does is it allows someone to rapidly spew bullets into a community, and outgun are even our own law enforcement officers here in York. I'm glad to see Commissioner Muldro here, who's been a longtime supporter of dealing with these issues. And that is because they've actually been used in attacks on police. Not here yet, as far as I know, though, he may speak to it. But in the, in Brackenridge, out in western Pennsylvania, we unfortunately lost the life of Chief Justin McIntyre, the police chief for Brackenridge. And during the attack, while firing back at other police, the perpetrator used one of these switches to attack other law enforcement officers. Chief McIntyre sadly lost his life during that encounter with the perpetrator. And if that switch wasn't there in those situations, it would have made it easier for police to subdue that individual. When we talk about this, why is the city of York taking on this issue? There's two core reasons. The first is that they are multiplying rapidly because they are easy to access, whether it's printing it on a 3D printer, ordering them for $20 or less from China. And anyone can convert a handgun into an automatic fire machine gun in these situations. The second is the law of the land today. Right now, Glock switches particularly are illegal at the federal level, but it requires a US attorney to take action. Not, and our own district attorney does not have that legal authority today. And so, whatever happens at the federal government level, giving a law here in the city of York will strengthen law enforcement's own ability locally to take action to address these Glock switches and other machine gun conversion devices. So, we are strengthening the law enforcement community's ability to respond. And it's such a critical time, when over the last five years, ATF have seen these devices explode in use, recovering five times more than they did five years ago. So, the time for act is, now is critical. The last piece I just want to talk about is preemption, because there is a general understanding that the city does not have the ability to establish its own firearm laws. And generally, that is true. But we are not talking about a firearm that is critical to the functioning of a weapon. We are talking about a small piece that is an added device to take a gun and make it illegal federally, but not give our local law enforcement the ability to act. And that's why so far, the Commonwealth Court, in the case against city of Philadelphia, found that the city of Philadelphia has the ability to regulate these Glock switches, not as a firearm, but as a part. not as a firearm, but as a part, and take this action. It's why Delaware County took similar action recently. And so seeing York take this next step is a big step forward in making sure our community is safe. Ultimately, we know guns don't obey, you know, political boundaries, right? And that is a critical reason why our state legislators should take that action themselves as well. And we hope that they will one day. But until they do, we shouldn't wait for that action. We should give the city of York and its law enforcement community the ability to keep communities safe so we don't have carnage multiplied in our communities and we can save lives. I appreciate your support and your continued efforts on this issue, and I hope tonight you will pass this law addressing machine gun conversion devices. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Commissioner Maudro, do you have any comments?
Commissioner Maudro with the York City Police Department. I was a little torn with whether I was going to say anything this evening or not. I feel like I've, over the years, I've said everything that I could say. I know that there are people that sit on either side of the issue, either side of the aisle, however it may be put. I respect the opinions, period. I respect that position, position anybody comes and brings to the table tonight or any other night regarding anything related to firearms and when you're trying to move the needle forward with respect to gun safety. But my position that I had to stand up was because of even the young man that's sitting in the back of the room now as one of my young officers. And for the mothers who may be watching or may see this later, that have had to deal with the loss of their children. And simply put, I think we're tone deaf if we don't consider what it's had to feel like when you go to these houses and you knock on these front doors or my investigators and detectives and officers sit down with the mothers and the family at our station and have to look them in the face and tell them that your child was riddled with bullets. I understand that people can take up arms in their defense. I understand there's going to be situations where people have to defend themselves. I understand that. But there's no need to leave our neighbors, our brothers, other people's kids laying on the sidewalk, torn to shreds by gunfire. There's no need for that. There's, nobody can tell me there's a need for that. I've done this too long. And when I look at young officers that suit up and come to work, we literally are in a culture where we're told all the time as police what we shouldn't have, what we shouldn't carry, that we're too military, we have too much, that we're told all the times, there's tons of legislation and regulation when it comes to us on how we approach and how we defend and what we do to protect our communities. But for the average person walking around, to have that level of, I don't know what you want to call it, killability, have that level of firepower, walking around with them with no concern, no caution, no, no need to feel that even in a, in a community like ours, in a tightly inhabited community where target acquisition is out the window and out the door because across the street you have a church, on the other side of the street you have a school, on the other side of the street you have somebody's grandmother. We're not in a rural area. We're not out in the country somewhere. We live in a, a community, we live in communities and neighborhoods where people are always a stone throw away. We have to do better. We keep losing people. We're losing people in events, we're losing people in schools, we're losing kids, we're losing people in synagogues and churches, every year, over and over and over and over again. But nobody wants to make the hard decision and say the tough thing and make the difficult call and make some kind of a change. Whether this is big legislation, whether this is small legislation, Council President Washington, Ms. Ed Queen, I'm just proud of you for continuing to speak up, continuing to be willing to make some kind of change, to say you can do whatever you want to do there, but not here. In this community, we have limits. And so I'm just, whether it passes tonight, whether this one passes, whether the last one gets by, whether anybody circles back around, whether people laugh at me or not, it's fine. I just, I'm going to continue to do the things that I need to do so that officers like him know that I'm going to stand up for them and I'm going to continue to speak up in meetings like this so that the mothers and the families that continue to lose people, that mom that had to sit there and look at pictures of her child be shot 70 times, somebody has to speak up and say, that's enough. Just because you can own something like this, just because you can possess something that can turn a handgun into a military weapon, just because you can doesn't mean you should. And I just, I thank you all for considering us as officers and I thank you for considering everybody else in the community that's already lost somebody. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maudro. Do we have any public comment regarding this matter? Yes, sir. And public comment is five minutes and under.
Understood. Can you hear me well here?
Yes.
Good evening, all. President Washington, members of the council and fellow citizens of York. My name is Grant Clarkson. I am the Pennsylvania State Deputy Director of the United Nations of America. I'm here tonight to testify against Bill Number 23 and the proposed amendment to Article 702 of the city code, which seeks to ban the possession, use, manufacture, and transfer of so-called rapid-fire devices, such as binary triggers, bump stocks, force reset triggers, and others.
I need you to speak up. I'm sorry, guys.
Sorry, I might have to lean down a little bit here. This ordinance is not only misguided, but blatantly unconstitutional and in direct violation of state law. I strongly urge you to defeat this proposal before it wastes taxpayer dollars on the inevitable legal challenges that York will lose. First, let's address the clearest violation, Pennsylvania State Preemption Law under Title 18 Pennsylvania Consolidated Statutes, Section 6120. The statute explicitly prohibits municipalities like York from regulating the lawful ownership, possession, transfer, transportation of firearms, ammunition, or ammunition components. This ordinance cleverly frames these devices as mere accessories. They are integral components that enhance the functionality of semi-automatic firearms, firearms that are unquestionably protected under state and federal law. Courts have repeatedly struck down similar local attempts to circumvent this preemption. For example, in Ortiz versus Commonwealth, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court invalidated an assault weapons ban in Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, ruling that such local regulations infringed on the state's exclusive authority over firearms. More recently, in 2019, Pittsburgh's ordinances banning certain magazines and assault weapons were declared illegal for the same reason. Just last November, in Crawford versus Commonwealth, the PA Supreme Court upheld these preemption laws, affirming that cities cannot enact their own gun controls. York cannot afford to repeat these mistakes. Preemption means the state calls the shots on gun policy, not local councils. Beyond preemption, this bill tramples on Article 1, Section 21 of the Pennsylvania Constitution, which declares, "The right of the citizens to bear arms in defense of themselves and the state shall not be questioned." This provision is even broader than the federal Second Amendment, protecting not just ownership, but the unquestioned right to effective self-defense. By banning these devices that allow law-abiding citizens to fire more efficiently in life-threatening situations, you're questioning and even affringing upon the fundamental rights. Pennsylvania courts have long held that firearm ownership is constitutionally protected under this section and regulations must not unduly burden it. Cases like Lehman versus Pennsylvania State Police, the courts emphasize that Article 1, Section 21 safeguards the tools necessary for self-defense, without room for local experimentation that chips away at these protections. This ordinance does not enhance public safety. It disarms responsible citizens while criminals will ignore these, blatantly ignore these ordinances, violating the core promise of our state constitution. Finally, this proposal runs afoul of the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution, especially in light of recent Supreme Court rulings. The amendment of the text is clear, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Post-New York State Rifle and Pistol Association versus Bruin in 2022, gun regulations must be consistent with the nation's historical tradition of firearms regulation. There is no historical connection for banning accessories, again, accessories like bump stocks or binary triggers. In fact, the court in Garland versus Cargill explicitly ruled that bump stocks do not convert semi-automatic firearms into machine guns, making them legal and unregulated at the federal level. Challenges to similar bans on assault weapons or high-capacity magazines are succeeding, and challenges to the bans are succeeding because such arms and accessories are in common use today for lawful purposes, such as Heller established, and cannot be banned. Courts are toppling restrictions left and right post-Bruin, and this ordinance would fare no better. It is an infringement on protected conduct without historical justification. Council members, defeating this bill is not about politics, it's about upholding the law and protecting the rights. Enacting it will lead to costly litigation, division in communities, and no real reduction in crime. Importantly, let's think of like a patchwork here. If various local municipalities are allowed to create gun laws, and it's not just here in York, say, every local municipality gets their own take on gun laws, how is a normal citizen supposed to know what the laws are in each and every local municipality? That's why we have state preemption law. I urge you to vote no on Bill 23 and preserve the freedoms that make Pennsylvania and York strong. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate and welcome any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson.
Thank you. No questions?
No, we don't.
Understood.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment regarding this matter?
My name is Randall Zeiler. I am pastor of Fisher-Crean Salem United Methodist Church up in Edders. I was previous pastor of York Messiah United Methodist Church here in North York Borough. Parsonage that we resided on is on Chapel Drive, which is just above Large Cemetery. There'd be many evenings of where we would be sitting outside hearing the gunfire, rapid gunfire that was coming up out of the city. The challenge here is that this has to stop. Plain and simple. Has to stop. It is not necessary, not necessary at all, for weapons to be lawfully created and then made illegal into weapons of mass destruction. We could look at multitudes of situations around our country of where if laws had been enacted or laws had been followed, a lot of those incidents would have not occurred at all or at the very least been so much less than what they turned into. Residing here in North York Borough for four years, can't tell you how many times we heard the gunfire echo up across Prospect Hill Cemetery. That's a reality. And I encourage you, the city council, to affirm this vote and to vote yes in this ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Zeiler. Yes, sir.
Look, my name is Evan Alessi.
Say the last name again.
Alessi, A-L-E-S-S-I. I've been a resident of York for over 15 years. I came up from Arkansas. I got law enforcement and security background, okay? I could tell you, and he could tell you too, these guns ain't bought. They're stolen. They don't go out and build these things in the backyard. They're stolen, period. It's a $20 part on Wish. It came in from China, just like fentanyl. Fentanyl's made in China, came up from the southern border. It's not a lie. It's a fact. And when you sit here and you're protected by law enforcement, I've been in the rooms, okay? I've been there, carrying a firearm concealed, rich folks running around talking about we got too many guns on this country, okay? And they're protected by firearms. It's not the gun. It's not the printer. It's the amount of money that is made from drugs, okay? You wouldn't have concealed carry permits if it wasn't for Florida. Florida was the first state to make a concealed carry permit because they had cocaine cowboys running around with MAC-10s, okay? Back then, MAC-10 was $1,000, okay? Back then, that was a lot of money. A MAC-10 today is about $23,000 with a $200 NFA stamp. A Glock 18, which is basically what a full-auto Glock is for law enforcement or military, that weapon for a civilian to have it legally is a $200 tax stamp and about $12,000, $18,000 in SOT license that cost about three grand, okay? And that's with an FFL. They got to be a manufacturer to even own one, okay? These guys are 3D printing these things. They're getting them on Wish, they're 3D printing them. And these 80, so-called 80% lowers, well, I did a local TV show over here for nine seasons. That TV show was on community access. That TV show, we gave away 80% AR lowers. But before we gave them away, okay, and what I mean by giving them away is if somebody wanted them, they'd go down to a gun shop that mailed them out, that cost my company, the show that I was doing, 600 bucks, just to get them mailed out right. And then they would go in and spend $100 to $125, pick up the lower, which was already mailed out and serialized, by the way. That's what cost us money because they had to do that. And we, and we got those lowers for free because the company was proud that we were representing them. Now, they were pieces of aluminum, they were paperweight until you mailed them out, okay? But the problem with the way this is worded is it doesn't matter what it is. If it's just an accessory, where do we stop? See, that's the problem. There's no place to stop. And I tell all my students that come to my class, your car is not a holster.
You have 30 more seconds.
Okay, thank you. Your car is not a holster. Bring them in. Because that's what they do. They go around shaking doors, busting out windows, and, and trust me, this guy knows. He's probably recovered, I recovered, a law enforcement sidearm from a public bathroom in my career, okay? So that is all. My name's Evan Alessi. Whoever's next?
Thank you, Mr. Alessi. Who's next? There were some people in the back.
Good evening. My name is David Klein. I live at 104 Bunker Hill Road, New Cumberland. I've been a York County resident all my life, all my adult life, dating back to 1979. I'm here today to express my strong support for the proposed ordinance addressing machine gun converters in the city of York. I don't live within the city limits. However, I don't feel my responsibility as a citizen of York County limits me to the boundaries of Fairview Township. I'm concerned about the well-being of all of York County. Why am I here this evening? I'm a husband, a parent, a grandparent, a former teacher in the Red Lion School District. I'm active in my church, a former scout leader, former soccer coach, former baseball coach. But even if I was just a single guy with no close relationships, I'd still be appalled and frightened by the prospect of someone spending $20 to transform a regular handgun into a fully automatic weapon. into a fully automatic weapon. Will this ordinance be effective? How could it not be? Passing this ordinance will make it illegal to transform a handgun legally concealed into a weapon with the firepower of a machine gun. Why now? We're in a period of unpredictability at the federal level. York City needs to take the initiative now to protect their citizens. We need to give local police the legal authority to address these threats directly. I want to thank the city of York for passing a ban of ghost, on ghost guns last year. I urge you to take the next step in keeping our residents safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. I believe there's other comment? Yes, sir. Ms. Marie.
Manuel Gomez, City of York, no bona fides for me. I'm just a regular person. Going back decades, of course, I part ways with a lot of you folks, and here we all know each other. So I know that these are very, very well-meaning initiatives, but I part ways with folks that I hold in very high esteem. We all know each other very well here, whether it's the gun-free zones, Lawson Stolen Gun Ordinance is, so-called ghost guns, yes, I have to say so-called. I would not vote affirmatively for this measure. And one thing that folks should understand that are not present and perhaps have not familiarized themselves with Article 702, this carries a $300 to $1,000 penalty. That's it. Now, regardless of the pomp and circumstance, please don't take that the wrong way, that's all that it is at the end of the day. In terms of efficacy, of course, it's going to be very little for various reasons. One of my greatest concerns anytime an initiative like this passes through these chambers is that local law enforcement doesn't often realize that doesn't mean you can stop me or you can stop anyone else, and I need to inspect your firearm, this looks funny, let me check this out. You can't do it. So, one of the things that must happen until our dear commissioner, I hold you in high esteem, got to make sure that our law enforcement community understands that, yes, we more than likely have the votes to push this forward, okay? But it doesn't change much in terms of the landscape of how we should be treated by law enforcement and how those of us that lawfully arm ourselves are going to go about our daily business. You wouldn't catch me with a so-called switch. I don't have the money to waste and butcher my firearms with something like that, but it stops there. I still would like to have the prerogative. And to our representative from ceasefire, you may wish to cover your ears, I'd own rocket launchers if I could and I had the resources. I'm all about self-preservation. I would never attack anybody else. I wouldn't initiate violence, but when it comes to defending oneself, of course, I am utmost in the camp of those that stand on principle and say, we reserve the right to bear arms. And yes, the state constitution does go far well beyond even the federal constitution, and I love it that way. You are within some threshold in peril of facing litigation, it's just a fact. I would vote no. And again, I know that this is very much a well-meaning initiative. You have to consider the fact that once something goes out and the schematics offer 3D printing it, forget about it. Not even China could stop this, and they're a lot more repressive than we are.
Thank you. Ms. Marie.
Marie Rolada, before my hair got this color, I was a shooter. I was a good shooter. I shot in Maine, I shot in Florida, and I shot as far west as Indiana. Carried my ammunition and my weapons in the car with me. I just want to refute what has been said about if there are, every little town has an ordinance, nobody would know. When we drove to Florida, we had to know what all the ordinances were in the states we were going through. Let me tell you, you can't carry a pound of black powder through New York State. The part of the problem is that unless you go to the hunter's safety course, there is no gun education anywhere. People don't know what they can do and can't do. People don't know whether they're going from here to there, whether whatever they're carrying is legal. They have no idea because nobody taught them. It was difficult to get the information through some places that we went through. Now, the shooting that I did was in places where there were probably between 1,000 and 1,500 people. And the police knew where it was and when it was, and so they would find a reason to stop you and see whether, especially in New York State, if you were heading, if you were heading to Maine, and they could figure that out by your route and with all these tracking things now, it's easy for them to know where you're going, where you came from. They were there. And you got whatever kind of, and they were usually fines up to $5,000 for first offense. So we were very careful to learn what the laws were in little towns along our way. And talk about Idaho, huh? Idaho, for years, has been tracking everything. And if you bought anything having to do with a firearm at any of the sporting goods stores there, police followed you to the border. So it, it is possible to have laws in little places like York.
You have 30 seconds, Marie. That's it. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, sir. Go for you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to speak on this topic this evening. I would, first and foremost, my name is Pastor Joshua Conlon. I pastor the Good News Free Baptist Church here in York. I've lived here in York for about five years now, moved up from North Carolina. It's the Southern draw, as you can tell. I do believe, I am a firm Second Amendment supporter. I do believe our founding fathers, even though they were not perfect men, they were wise men in most cases, and that's the reason the Second Amendment was put there. It was to protect the First Amendment, the freedom of speech that we have in our country that we are exercising tonight. I'm not going to go into the history and whatnot. The gentleman from the GOA has done a good job about that with the legislations and the constitutions of our federal level and state level. And, you know, no one likes to hear of shootings that happen, whether they be in schools or churches or grocery stores, department stores, anything like that. But as we currently stand, there are over 20,000 gun laws on the federal and state levels, 20,000. I would wager to say that most of those laws are not being enforced with a lot of these criminals that are possessing these weapons illegally, which has already been mentioned. You will be hard-pressed to find a legal gun owner committing crimes. Now, that doesn't say that it never happens. The majority of these crimes that happen are, happen with illegal stolen firearms. But, you know, we can talk about legislations and laws and things like that, but ultimately, it's a heart issue. And no matter how many legislations or laws you pass, you cannot legislate the heart. It's impossible. Matter of fact, in the Bible, the book of Jeremiah, chapter 17, verse 9, the Bible says, "The heart is deceitful above all things and desperately wicked who can know it." So I would urge you to vote no against this amendment or law, whatever you're titling this evening. And again, just I thank all of you this evening for your time. Thank you for this open forum for us to come and exercise our First Amendment right. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Conlon.
Good evening, Madam President, City Council.
Good evening.
Initially, I came up here with a liability question, but after listening to the last couple of speakers, I am a proponent of my gun rights as well, but I need to ask, and also as a resident in one of the most concentrated communities in York, West King Street, where a lot of activity is going on, on a daily basis, I do believe that this legislation would be a great tool for this reason. I think this goes beyond more of a moral or gun rights issue, but for those of us who actually live in this community, we know the street is a sidewalk and the sidewalk is the street. And with this kind of firepower, when defending oneself, you're talking about 70 rounds in a minute plus that can go into very, in a very concentrated area. And I think that overrides the issue of self-protection, et cetera, et cetera, when it comes to defending ourselves. I think that the issue is clear. We don't need this in our community. I think it gives an arsenal to our law enforcement, and though we do believe in our gun rights, we also understand that there's, there's overkill. So with that, that's the initial response to several of the issues. We understand it's stolen, et cetera, et cetera, but even in defending ourselves, 70 rounds being shot at quote-unquote someone that we're defending ourselves against can actually go wrong very quickly as well. With that said, has City Council, Madam President, received any kind of assessment of the litigation costs that might occur with a, with a yes vote and putting this on the books? The question that I initially wanted to ask was because, the reason why was because I did hear about the city of Philadelphia. City of Philadelphia is a first-class city. Pittsburgh is a second-class, second-class city. The rules tend to be different for those cities, but at the end of the day, do you have an assessment of what this might cost the city and taxpayers to defend this legislation, even though it's morally correct, we, I believe, et cetera? What is that cost, and has the solicitor given that to you guys? And if so, can we see that as a community? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment regarding this?
So I'll give you a little bit of the background on the court cases and what it says in the Constitution. I'd like to give a couple of personal anecdotes. I was born in Washington, DC. I grew up in Bethesda, Maryland. My mom's family is from Lebanon County, so when I was nine, we moved up to Lebanon County. So I've seen every side of DC gun laws, Maryland gun laws, Pennsylvania gun laws. DC has some of the strictest gun laws in the country. Look at their crime rate. All of these things are banned. You've got to regulate, you've got to register every single pistol, and it can't even be done online. You've got to go in person. I'm saying it is, it is a very, very difficult process to own a firearm in DC. There is still a massive amount of crime in DC. Can we talk about this patchwork? There's a massive disparity in criminals who own firearms who are terrorizing the local populace versus regular citizens like myself. That's why I'm here. I am a citizen. I want to be able to defend myself. I want to carry. But we're continually, continually disarmed. It is very, very difficult to get a permit to carry in Washington, DC, to carry even just a regular pistol. Here in Pennsylvania, it's not constitutional carry. I wish it was constitutional carry, that if I was a citizen, I would be able to just carry a firearm. But these, these loops that citizens have to continually jump through chip away at the Second Amendment, and then all of a sudden, you've got this massive, again, massive disparity, and it's so hard to own a firearm, that the only people who are owning the firearms are criminals who are breaking the law anyway. If this ordinance were to pass, it would just further move us towards that line of what DC is. Again, DC's got incredibly strict gun laws. This is the first step in getting us there, of regular citizens having to jump through a hoop, of regular citizens having to think, am I breaking a law? I don't know. What should I do? Maybe I don't carry my firearm today because I don't know what the local laws are. And it, I know there was a point made earlier of just know the local laws, but when everything is constantly changing, if every single municipality in Pennsylvania is able to make and change their laws, it's going to be impossible to carry a firearm. I remember being myself, very, very flustered, nervous, over moving to Maryland after college, constantly researching, did I register my firearms properly? Because some, the technicalities are just so, it's so close, it makes it very, very difficult. And at some point, regular citizens are going to be too afraid to carry, and then that's the problem. And then their normal people are disarmed, and it's just a constant barrage of only criminals who are carrying firearms for bad reasons. I'd like to point out, too, Glock switches are already legal on the federal level. They, they are not legal. However, FRTs, forced reset triggers, completely different thing. They are not, they do not convert your gun to fully automatic. They are semi-automatic at a higher rate of fire. Those are legal on the federal level, but your ordinance is planning to ban those, too. Again, the ATF just lost this battle with, with FRTs, and FRTs are legal in Pennsylvania. So what I'm saying is it's going to be very difficult if we start chipping away. Another fantastic point is that, I mean, I would like to point out, along with the DC crime, is like, you have a fire extinguisher in your home. I would like to carry a firearm for the same purpose. We can rely, and it should be citizens and police hand-in-hand, who are, are working together. It should not be feeling like it's like citizens versus police or, you know, the best way forward is for a well-armed community of citizens to be able, the point I want to make is that someone is going to run the streets. It's going to be the criminals, it's going to be well-armed citizens who are able to defend themselves, or it's going to be some sort of very, very difficult situation. I think the best thing to do is, is to not strip the rights of regular citizens, because it's, we're going to go down the path that DC has gone down, and again, they've got the strictest gun laws in the country. That's all I really have to say. Do you have any questions or?
Manuel Gomez, you got to remember that although we have people here in chambers, and I'm not connected to anyone here, or this is not some sly statement to say I'm connected to anyone otherwise, but anybody would have standing to sue unless things have changed from the last time I was active on any of these issues. So it's not just anybody.
I can hear you.
Not just anybody that is a city resident that may come here and would have potential implications by way of litigation, fees and costs, and the excellent point that was made by Mr. Walker, that these things should be done, fully encompassing all the potential impacts, and you should weigh that against the efficacy of what will actually take place in the real world once it's implemented. Is it worth to have this sort of affirmative ordinance on the books and open yourselves up to those potential litigation aspects? Or is it something better said, perhaps you can package it as a resolution, which of course, we've done in the past as a municipality?
Thank you.
As an ordinary woman walking down an ordinary street.
Ms. Marie, can you give us your name again, please?
Marie Rolada.
Thank you.
I never carried my weapon. I have friends who live in the country. I have friends who live in the country, who have their weapons all the time, and they told me in no uncertain terms, since I lived in the big bad city, I needed to carry it. The problem with that is very simple. Someone is much more likely to mug me and grab my weapon and take off it with it than I would have any reason to use it or even be able to get it out and use it. So, I felt the community was safer and I was safer without carrying it. And I also made sure that it was in my vehicle, that it was locked up properly, and in the house, it was locked up properly. If they broke into my house, they would not have been able to get any of my weapons. They broke into my car, they'd be able to, but with a whole lot of work. But I would not like any of my weapons to be out on the street.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call a vote?
Bob?
Yes.
Johniskew? Dennis?
I would have to say no.
Yeah, Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, introduction of new bill. We have introduction of bill number 24. So introduced.
Bill number 24, introduced by, I'm sorry. Bill number 24, introduced by the Queen of Washington. And that is a bill moving the 2026 31 Plan of York Business Improvement, District Authority.
And that is a bill, and it will sit. Up next, we have introduction of bill number 25. So introduced.
Bill number 25, introduced by the Queen of Washington, a bill moving Part 13, planning a zoning code, Title 1 of the zoning ordinance. Article 1302, definitions to provide for definitions related to vape and smoke shops. Article 1303, to provide for vape and smoke shops as a permissible use in the EC District. And Article 1304, definitions to include regulation governing of vape and smoke shop use within the city.
And that is a bill, and it will sit as well. Up next, we have resolution number 58. So introduced.
Resolution number 58, introduced by the Queen of Washington. She resolved by the council that also hereby consents the appointment made by the mayor of Michael A. Walker as a member of the Susquehanna Area Regional Airport Authority to fill the unexpired term of Carolyn J. Van Newker, whose term shall expire the first Monday of January 22nd.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this?
Nope.
I just want to say something about Job Corps.
Mr. Reed, this has to do with a vote for something that doesn't have to do with Job Corps.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. The council comment time has gone. Thank you. Is there any public comment regarding the item that is on the floor? Madam Clerk, please call a vote.
Bob?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Mr. Walker is here with us this evening. He wants to stand at the podium.
Give me one second. I'm going to administer this young man to both the office because you're younger, but younger than me, just slightly, though. All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Stand up for me so you don't feel so lonely. State your name.
Michael A. Walker.
Do solemnly affirm.
I will affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I got to look your eyes closed, damn it.
As I share with any of our residents, anytime we do this and at any other time, the opportunity is always available for individuals from our community to serve on our authorities, our boards and our commissions. It's a great time to serve and give back to the city of York, also a great time to get involved and understand the operations and all that goes into ensuring that we are a successful city. So, thank you, Mr. Walker, and also thank you to the countless others that are serving now on our authorities, boards, and commissions, and those that have served. Up next, we have resolution number 59.
So introduced.
Is there a motion to read by short title?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor, yes? Okay. Resolution number 59, introduced by Betsy Buckingham, authorizing an agreement with the York City School District to provide services for school crossing guards for the 2526 school year.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. I do have a comment regarding, similar to this this evening.
I have a comment directly, just before that. It'll be appropriate, yes. This has to do specifically with the agreement between the city and the School District of York to provide crossing guards. It doesn't, it is, it does not have anything to do with the conversations we have around the RFPs and awarding the actual crossing guard contract. I just wanted to make that clear if there was any confusion for anyone.
Thank you, Vice President Buckingham. My comment does have to, as a pinpoint on last week. I just wanted to follow up on a discussion that took place during council's August 19th legislative meeting relating to the school crossing guard contract. During council's August 19th meeting, it was questioned if the procurement process outlined in the Smallwood Act, which is Article 136, was followed for the school, school crossing guard RFP. That claim demanded much scrutiny because no invitation was extended to the Full Equal Business Opportunity Committee, EBOC, and no record has been provided to suggest a meeting was held. Legislated members of the committee were neither contacted nor were they present for the meeting. At least one RFP received for school crossing guard services qualified for review under Act Article 136, making the EBOC's involvement not only relevant, but also essential. And to give you just a little background, Article 136 was rewritten to help reduce marketplace barriers that hinder the formation, growth, and participation of minority and women-owned businesses. Under this legislation, any proposal that qualifies must be formally reviewed by the EBOC, which includes key members such as council representative and a member of the Human Relations Commission. To follow up on this, on Business Administrator Robertson's assertion, I submitted a formal request on August 21st to her and the mayor asking for meeting minutes and a list of attendees. That request left unanswered until today with another haphazard excuse on following policies and legislation set forth. What makes this even more troubling is the amount of time, effort, and public resources invested in strengthening the Smallwood Act, and here we are, have the first known opportunity to apply its updated procurement process, one that directly supports equity in contracting, and it appears to have been overlooked. Council would have respected a more transparent and candid response instead of being met with almost two weeks of silence and then excuses, which only adds up to public skepticism. City Council and our residents deserve transparency and accountability, not excuses and avoidance, and I demand better for this administration. I look forward to, and I believe we all look forward to, the administration addressing this with the most urgency and professionalism. Thank you. Is there any other council comment?
No. Thank you, President Washington.
I would also thank you, President Washington, and I would say for future years, maybe we can look at whether this particular piece of legislation could be done for a multi-year period, because it's the same as, I believe it's always been, talking about the shared cost of school crossing guards. So, if that's just a consistent plan, maybe it can be done for a four-year period, and that gives maybe more time for the administration to handle the 136 and the Smallwood Act with RFPs.
Thank you. Is there any public comment regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, please call a vote.
Bob?
Yes.
Johniskew?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. At this time, we don't have any requests for future meetings. Counselors, any comments this evening? The administration is not here to offer any comment. At this time, it's 7:21 PM, and our meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a wonderful rest of your evening, and thank you.